Thank you.
I'll make a motion to open the December 1st meeting of the Plankboard.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Patrick, if you could outline what the issue, procedural issue is on the Moses Park.
I can, Mr. Chairman. So this is the enclave application that you're aware of. After your site plan approval, the fire marshal had recommended some relatively minor changes to the plan. They related to the placement of a fire hydrant and easing of the radius of some of the driveways to allow fire apparatus to maneuver through the site a little more efficiently. It was borderline whether this was an amendment to the site plan or not. At advice of council, the recommendation is that we formalize those revisions to the plan by resolution. You have a resolution before you tonight which basically holds all the terms and conditions of the original approval in place and simply replaces this one modified drawing as part of the site plan approval package. No other changes, no other modifications. So you have a resolution before you, Mr. Chairman.
So we reviewed this at the work session and we agreed that this was a worthwhile thing to do, so could we get a resolution to vote on this?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, returning to the order of the agenda, public hearing, Beach Plum Meadows, Patrick, you created a memorandum regarding the secret decision to be made regarding this application.
I did, Mr. Chairman.
I'm wondering if you could briefly go over the main points of that memorandum.
So where we are in this process is the applicant has submitted a sketch plan for the subdivision. That sketch plan has now matured to a degree where it is fairly well-established. It's set, the number of units, the configuration of the subdivision and so forth is set. The approval of that sketch plan is considered an action pursuant to seeker. So before you grant sketch plan approval, you must make a decision regarding seeker. The memorandum gives you some background regarding the process and the procedure, some of the misinformation that may have been existing in the past regarding the designation and classification of the action. But importantly, what the memorandum did is it summarized all of the materials the applicant has given you with respect to the various issues of concern that are established in the seeker regulations as the items you must address when making your determination of significance. So for example, with respect to the potential traffic impacts of the project, the applicant has submitted a traffic study. We've requested supplements to that traffic study which the applicant has provided for you, and there are some conclusions in that traffic study. So I've summarized all of those various issues that are issues of concern to you and what the applicant has provided you. And now you're at a point where you need to make a decision on how to continue the processing of this application from the point of view of seeker. So you must either neg-deck the project, meaning you have enough information before you today, to render a determination that there will be no significant adverse impact based on the development of the site as proposed by the applicant, or alternatively, the adoption of a positive declaration which indicates that the material that has been provided to you as of today does not sufficiently answer all of those questions, and there may be a potential adverse impact associated with the project requiring the preparation of an environmental impact statement. And that environmental impact statement really does three things. It provides a deeper dive into those issues that you may have concern about. The applicant would be required to do a more thorough analysis. Number two, it provides for a formal public participation process separate and apart from the subdivision approval process, so they would sort of duplicate one another and provide more opportunity for public input. And number three, it would also compel the applicant to evaluate alternatives to the plan that's currently before you. And as you know, the applicant has given you several alternatives up to this date already. So that's really the benefit of the EIS, and that's really where we are today. I think the board is at a point where it needs to make a choice on how it's going to process this application moving forward.
Thank you.
And this falls into unlisted action?
That's correct.
So this is an unlisted action?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Flanagan, before I ask for public comment, would you like to, is there anything you'd like to add to what's transpired so far with regards to where the application stands at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think I have anything substantive to add. I did have a chance to review the memorandum that Mr. Cleary prepared, and I think it does address all of the issues that we've been discussing over the past few months. And I think that, as he has indicated, you have enough to make a decision and to move the application forward.
Excuse me, Gil, could you just speak into the mic so we're able to hear?
Is that, is that, is that better?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
It's a lot better.
Okay, oh, sorry about that.
It moves.
So I think, I think that you have enough information to move forward with this, and I would ask that, at the very least this evening, that you consider closing the public hearing on the sketch plan. Whether or not you render a secret determination this evening is something else. I see there are only three of you here. If there's some concern among you about where this is headed, we might want to have four members present before you actually take that action. So I would ask you to take that into consideration. And that's all I have to say.
I'd now like to offer the public the opportunity to make additional comments regarding this application. Does anybody wish to make a statement? Yes, sir, if you could come forward and speak into the microphone, your name, address.
Vincent Skrbinski, 76 Fox Hollow Lane, Southampton. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Stevenson and the members of the board for keeping the public hearing open to allow us to address, you know, some of the things that were brought up at the last meeting. Going through the video of the last meeting, I found that apparently everyone agrees, including the applicant, that there will be an environmental impact. None of the, none of the experts to date has described what, described what the impacts are. They acknowledge its impacts, they don't describe them. They don't describe their adverse effects on the environment and the result of these effects on the area's residents. And no one has described the mitigating measures that will be taken and how much, how much it will, these mitigating measures will, will reduce the adverse impacts on, furthermore, on July 27th, a letter to Mr. Flanagan from Joseph Porconi of the Suffolk County Water Authority states, "While there is existing residential development within the capture zone, additional development this close to the well field will certainly exacerbate the level of the nitrates in the system." Mr. Porconi's letter goes on to state, "If the domestic, if the domestic wastewater can be conveyed to a nearby sewage treatment plant or one that can be built on the southern border of the property, the Suffolk County water concerns will be minimized." Please note that he does not say eliminated. Mr. Flanagan said, Mr. Flanagan and Mr. Marine has both indicated at the November 3rd meeting that the sewage treatment plant would lessen the impact. They never said that it would eliminate the impact. I think the important point is here, there's still going to be an impact, you know, what's, what's the effect of that impact? Mr. Stevenson summarized the question that needs to be answered when he said with reference to the sewage treatment plant, "Is that going to make it?" My question to the board is to please ask a neutral expert to describe in layman's terms the adverse impacts on the environment, the effects of these impacts, the mitigating measures, the degree of mitigation, and the resulting effect on the environment and, on the environment and the health of the village residents. In summary, will the adverse impacts of this development rise to the level that they will have a detrimental effect on the health of the village residents? An answer to all these questions in layman's terms will assure everyone that the board is making the correct decision. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Frances Jono Vies. I live at 209 Bishop's Lane in Southampton. I'd like to go back for a moment to the last meeting. On November 1st, I submitted on behalf of members of the community a letter to the village planning board, which I think was very clear on the standards for making, for making a positive or a negative declaration. I was unable to be here, but I understand that the person who read the four points from the letter was stopped at the first point and asked for specifics. So tonight I'd like to address some of the specifics that went behind the, that were the rationale for the statements made to you. The statements that she wasn't allowed to read were that...
Wasn't your letter primarily concerned with whether this was a type 1 action or not?
No. My letter was primarily concerned...
It was. I mean, I read the letter.
My letter, which I wrote, so I can tell you what it was concerned with.
I read the letter, ma'am. And would you please not lecture me?
I wrote the letter.
May I speak?
Why are you in, I am a member of the public, I am now...
I am the chairman of the board, and it's my opportunity to either hear you or not hear you. I'm telling you, I read the letter.
Yeah.
And the letter was, a lot of talk about whether this was a type 1 listing or not, and it cited a lot of case law about type 1. Our analyst, Mr. Cleary, has said that there's no way it can be a type 1 action.
Your analyst, Mr. Cleary, cited the exact same paragraph that I cited without attributing it to the SECRE handbook. Now, I'm not interested in whether it's a type 1, a type 2, or an unlisted...
Then why was that the subject of your letter so much?
That wasn't the topic of my letter so much. If you'd like, I'll read the letter.
I've read the letter.
Okay, if you'd like, I'll read the letter. But let's move on. My point is that, taken, extracted, and Mr. Leary can agree or disagree with this, extracted from the SECRE handbook is, if you have identified, if the public has identified one environmental impact, at least one environmental impact, you must give it a full SECRE review. Conversely, if you decide to give it, to give it a negative deck, that means you are stating for the record that there is not one single adverse environmental impact anticipated by this project. That was the gist of my letter, not whether it was a type 1, a type 2, or an unlisted action. Mr. Cleary cites the exact same paragraph that I just cited. Mr. Leary also makes a conclusion here. He said, "Type 2 actions are those that would never result in a significant adverse environmental impact." That's a misstatement. Never is not the word used by SECRE. What SECRE states is, "Type 2 actions have, are those determined not to have a significant impact or are otherwise precluded from environmental review." What that statement means is that based on current conditions, current knowledge, and after a hard look at this particular point in time, you determine that this application has not, is not going to have a single significant environmental review.
That's not correct. Just to, just to correct the record, a type 2 action requires no further environmental review.
That's not what I'm questioning. I'm questioning your use of the word "never." Okay? Let's move on. Let's just, okay, you also provide, so are we on the same page that if only one environmental impact is identified, and the environmental impacts are not only identified by the developer, as a matter of fact?
Why didn't you want a full environmental impact for Bishop Pons then? Why did you come in here and support that application with no full environmental impact?
Because I lived next to and investigated...
I was, that is...
Number one, I don't have to answer that question. What I did yesterday is of no concern to you.
I don't have to listen to you here raise your voice and carry on like this. If you can carry on a civil conversation, answer my question, I'm happy to talk with you.
Your question is out of order.
It is.
Yeah, it is. Your question is out of order. You don't, you don't question me, no matter in what term and what tone of voice, on what previous actions, unless you want to sit and review the 30-year history of the Rambo site and that application.
I'm wondering why is one application different than the other? If they all should, every time you turn...
Why is one application different from the other?
Why, can't we treat them all equally? Seems to me that would be a good idea.
Do you want to address that, Mr. Robinson?
No.
Why can't all applications be treated equally?
No.
You don't want to address that. Okay, let me move on.
We don't advocate that? We should treat some people differently than others?
You know, if you'll forgive me, that question is so naive or so purposely stupid, I can't answer it.
It's a good question.
It's a good question?
Just answer it.
Okay, what's your question again?
Why should one application be held to a different standard than another?
Okay, one application, one, one application concerns the remediation of a 13-acre disturbed, disfigured, environmentally suspect site. The other concerns a change of zone, a change of usage, and in some people's minds, a down zoning from open space to a residential property. They are different by definition. They are different under the code. They are going for different things. Pons' application was to change a pre-existing non-conforming use to another pre-existing non-conforming use that was of a substantial benefit to the public. That was substantiated by the public. There was 100% approval of that. That is why they are different applications.
This is a non-conforming use. A nursery, which is the former use of this property, is a non-conforming use for this property.
Is that your, is your determination that you can't look at...
I haven't made a determination, I'm just taking...
Is your position? That you can't...
I just find it amazing that you've come up here and are so antagonistic, and you want us to treat one application one way and one application the other way, depending how you feel about that application.
How do I want you to treat the applications differently?
I don't know.
If you don't know, then what are you talking about? How do I want you to treat these applications? I want you to look at both of them under the...
Because there's going to be some earth overturned here, which is an environmental impact, we should have a full study. Well, in every construction project, there's earth overturned.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not concerned...
And we don't have a full EIS for every single one.
I'm not concerned with the earth overturning. I'll give you my reasons for why I think you need an environmental impact statement. And by the way, the Pons provided you with, I think, a 400-page DEIS and a final EIS. It went through the total process. I really don't know what you're trying to do here. Let me just go on. Using Mr. Cleary's criteria, Mr. Cleary, if we're on the same page, that one environmental impact requires you to do a full environmental impact statement.
Let me just clarify that, an impact that can't be mitigated.
You didn't state that, Mr. Cleary, and I don't see that in the SECRE handbook.
You should read it more carefully.
Yeah, okay.
That's a basic premise.
Yeah, I would perhaps if you ever cited a reference. Anyway, let me say here that these are the, these are the environmental impacts. I'm not here to amuse you, sir, not at all. These are the environmental impacts that we have identified, the public have identified. We need to identify one. The public states there's an adverse, there will be an adverse impact on traffic. There'll be an increase in noise levels. There'll be a substantial increase in solid waste production. These are from Mr. Cleary's list quoted from the handbook. Flooding, leaching, and drainage problems are anticipated. We refer you to the Mr. McAllister, the former baykeeper's statement, who said that sewage treatment is not an automatic remedy for increased density. It's untested, and there's been proven poor performance in monitoring, registering by the DEC. Five, the preservation of open space is a consideration. That is what the master plans in the community wants. Six, a substantial change in use and intensity of use. These are now six from Mr. Cleary's list of 12 maximum impacts. But the most important is that two or more related actions, in this case, the Pons condo development and the anticipated Roscoe development, we won't, that's on the town, but as a planning board, you should consider it, none of which would have a significant impact on the environment alone, but when considered cumulatively would meet one or more of the criteria listed by SECRE. Therefore, there is ample significant adverse environmental impact from the consideration and the development proposed by this applicant. And we ask you for a positive declaration under the standards of SECRE provided by Mr. Cleary. That is, one adverse environmental impact requires a SECRE, a determination, a positive declaration, and a full SECRE review. Check the other applications I've been involved in, and let's see if you can find me contradicting myself.
Thank you for your opinion.
That is not an opinion. That is a reiteration of the paid political consultant, who, by the way, I want to say on record, if you really want to know what antagonism is, I think this paid consultant, which is supposed to represent the village, is advocating for the developer.
Thank you for your opinion. I appreciate all that you have to say. It's unfortunate you have to say it in such an antagonistic and critical way of the board.
There are many ways to be antagonistic, Mr. Stevenson, many ways to provoke. You seem to be adept at a, at a more soft-pedaled approach.
Did you understand what she was saying?
Does anybody else have anything to say?
Well, yes, I do. I'm Donna DeLeo. I reside at 125 Fox Hollow Lane. I appreciate the board hearing me out. I, my concerns mirror those of Frances and the other folks in the neighborhood who have come up to speak tonight. The environmental concerns are great. I don't have to list them again, they've already been put out there. One thing that hasn't been looked at is the proximity of the dry wells that are going to be placed alongside the berm to the Long Island Railroad tracks. I've been in touch more than several times with the engineering department of the Long Island Railroad. They've not been made aware of this proposed development. They are concerned. I've been informed that the developer, in many cases, needs to have a letter of no objection from the Long Island Railroad Engineering Department after having provided them with whatever sketch plan or documents they have right now showing where the dry well placement will be. We've also talked about the care that should be taken to avoid destabilization of the Long Island Railroad property and tracks during the building process, and also the effect of vibration on anything placed nearby the tracks. If it's something that can be undermined by vibration, the stability of such, that has to be looked at by their engineering department. He also asserted that perhaps the builder should obtain an EIS, although the Long Island Railroad cannot require that particular document. So he would like to have full documentation, the engineering department and my contact there, so that they can take a look at it to see what's going to be placed near and around their property. And this is something, he said, that should have been provided a while ago, given the proximity and given the intention. I am also concerned, the document provided by Mr. Cleary states that the Suffolk County Water Authority has not provided any confirmation of the adequacy of the design of this project at this time. If, if they're not providing their seal of approval, then that is an environmental concern. That means that they haven't concluded, they haven't given approval. So at that point, I would think that would spur an environmental study or the need for an environmental study. This is in this document. In looking at the proposed, bear with me a moment. I believe the chromoglast wastewater treatment system is what's being proposed here. This requires an operator, someone to maintain it, someone to keep track of the date, the weather, current average daily flow, current number of cycles per day, dissolved oxygen content, microscopic examination, equipment breakdown, report on repair status, current phase times for aeration, and by the way, aeration concerns me greatly, anoxic settle discharge, any and all changes to time clocks and volume of sludge wasted in gallons per day. The system is sensitive. It's sensitive to detergents, it's sensitive to laundry waste, groundwater, stormwater, condensate drains cannot be leached in, non-biodegradable materials, chemicals such as acid caustic cleaners, gasoline, oil, turpentine, photo development fluids, et cetera. Disposal of cleaning disinfectants such as mild chlorine bleaches, kept to a domestic use. Excessive amounts of these materials can do serious harm. The use of low-suds biodegradable detergents recommended. Excessive use can cause foaming and odor problems. And this is just, by the way, in their handbook. There's much, much more complications. It's a new type of system, hasn't been readily tested, and is not necessarily the solution for putting in more homes on a piece of property than might be allowed. It's not necessarily the solution. So again, my concerns mirror those of the residents and my neighbors, yes.
Donna, thank you. It's very interesting that you talk about the ongoing funding of this once subdivision is in place.
The ongoing funding of the waste management, yeah.
Right. Did the MTA get you, give you anything in writing? Is there contact information for this engineer? I mean...
I have contact information from the engineer that I spoke with. He is going, just by what I discussed with him, and as an engineer, he would like to see some plans.
There's not an immediate mechanism by which the planning board can get those plans to him? Do they have anybody that can come out and look at this themselves? They can foil this?
They would have somebody come and look at it. Yeah, they would have someone come and look at it.
Been discussed, would they do that?
But he is requesting first to have some sort of plan so that their engineers there can look at it and decide who to send out, what team of people to send out, what needs to be looked at.
Yeah, if, if he could take a few minutes to put something in writing to the board, that would be helpful.
Sure, sure. And it would be great if, if I could, I would be very happy to pass along to him whatever information, planning information the board has, so that, so that they could look at it. And this way, if they are, if you, if the board and this department are going to speak, at least, you can speak.
You're welcome to go in and foil the file and get copies, and then send that to him, if that helps.
Okay, are those completely up to date?
I don't know. I don't look at the file, but I think everything is pretty much up to date from where we are now.
Okay, I'd be very happy to do that. I'd be very happy to do that. And if you'd like his contact information, I'll provide that as well.
Well, it's to the board, so any letter you have, just address it to the file or the board.
Okay.
But again, if you want to take it upon yourself to get those, you're welcome to do that.
Sure, I'll do that. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Valerie Hart, Corrigan Street. I'm not going to, again, repeat what everyone's gone through already, but I agree with all the issues that have been brought up. And I do agree that because of the, because of these issues, a lot of the need clarification. But I'd just like to bring up a few more, and they have to do with the new plan. Has everyone seen it? And they know where the new, where the leaching pools are? Well, the leaching pools, according to the plan, part of the leaching that's coming from the, the leaching pools is going into lots 15 and 16. Now, will this be, are we looking at environmental issues that might be brought up in the future? This is something I think that has to be done now. Also, where the leaching pools are now is, was the 9,000 square feet of open space. The developer has now considered, has thought about park, and he's put the park in the other half of this specific open space next to the leaching pools, and they're going into the park space. Well, the park space is, will be affected by the leaching pools. Park space is for everyone, and it's, it's, it's done on a formula. Has he, has he made this contribution of park space based on the formula? I'm asking that question.
I don't believe so.
Yeah, so, there's one thing. And I, and it might not meet the criteria, it might not be enough park space, so you've got an issue there. Building lots 1, 2, and 16 are not in the building envelope. He's going to need a variance for this, I think. If you look at the map...
What do you mean by that?
Well, lots 1, 2, and 16, he's got, how do I explain this? It's got a building envelope.
Right.
And not all of the issue, like, the deck isn't within that building envelope. So he'd have to get very... So he'd have to get variances. Also, Guilfoyle was a paper road. Have we gotten a letter yet from those participates on Guilfoyle Road that have said that they're, they want to abandon the road? Is that letter in the file? And the proposed size of the houses is 2,000, 3,200 square feet. The layout does not say how many bedrooms, or if this could increase in size, which, let's face it, if it's in the building envelope, it probably can. So if you have a certain amount of bedrooms, any, I believe the code is, if you go, if you start with the second bedroom, there should be a parking space for all additional bedrooms, and it's not the driveway. These are just a few issues. How far is the chromaglast plant from the Long Island Railroad? That's another issue. How far is it from any other buildings in that vicinity? Where does it belong? Where's the letter from the Board of Health stating that they've seen someone at the Board of Health? And I think we talked about the leaching pools last meeting, and it wasn't sure, they weren't sure where they were going to put them. So if they've met with the Board of Health, or they've seen an engineer with the Board of Health, how could he say it's in the correct place if we just discussed it at the last meeting? So those are just a few questions. And I think you... There are enough significant adverse effects to actually have a positive, do a positive deck on this, and definitely an environmental study. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I feel compelled to make some comments. Some of the comments we've heard before, but I'll start with the comment about the sewage treatment plant. I think at the last meeting, we submitted documentation to the effect that the, where the plant and its leaching field are located is outside of the capture zone of the Suffolk County Water Authority. So that was their main concern, as I understand it, and in fact, we have designed the system so as to be outside of their capture zone. Now, it's important, when you look at the site plan, that we're talking about two leaching rings to service the sewage treatment plant. And I've been advised by Mr. Marinus, and he can testify to that, that those two rings and the effluent that would come out of them would produce considerably less than even a 10-lot, 40,000-square-foot subdivision, which would conform with the Health Department's requirements, where we wouldn't need anything special. So this is actually better than a subdivision that's basically half of what the village would allow and what the Health Department would allow. So I think it's important to remember that. I think we've documented it, but it bears repeating. And again, as Mr. Cleary said, the SEQA regulations talk about a significant adverse environmental impact that really can't be mitigated. Now, the key is significant. Not, anything you do has an environmental impact, virtually anything. The question is whether it's a significant adverse environmental impact that can't be mitigated. And I think that what we've been doing over the past number of meetings is addressing the concerns that the board and the public have raised. Mr. Cleary referred to some of them, including traffic studies, the sewage treatment plant, and so forth. As far as drainage is concerned, as you know, that normally comes at a later stage in the review of any subdivision. And it bears repeating that this is a sketch plan. And if you look at what a sketch plan is defined as in the village code, it is, the purpose of a sketch plan is to establish the general layout of the subdivision. Now, I've done a number of subdivisions in 35 or 36 years, and quite often, what comes through the process is not exactly what went into the process, so this may vary, will need to be tweaked. If there are issues of drainage that the, that the Long Island Railroad raises, drainage is something we have to study in a later part of the process. So just because you give sketch plan approval to this doesn't mean that everything is over. This is not a final subdivision application. And I don't think that people fully understand that. This is only a general conceptual design level that we presently are at. I think that's about it. In terms of Guilfoyle Street and the abandonment, we've indicated from the start that a condition of the approval ultimately of this project would be that Guilfoyle Street is abandoned. Obviously, we're not going to do that until and unless we know the project is moving forward. So I, I think that all the issues I've heard this evening have been raised before, and I believe that they've been adequately addressed, and I would certainly hope that it's time to move on with a sketch plan, bearing in mind what the code says that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lemansky, Mr. Hamer, do you have anything to say, add to the discussion?
Well, I think as far as the septic, the sewage treatment plant goes, I think the addition of the sewage treatment does have a better effect than if you have any number of houses putting untreated waste into the ground, which will increase your, your nitrates where the septic system will pull them out. I'm not sure why they went to an eight-inch rainfall on their, on their drainage. I don't think it's necessary. And I think if they go back to four and take out some of those drainage rings, they'll be in better shape. And then I, I don't, I don't recall the, the drainage, the, the surface runoff rings being on anybody's property, but I can take another look at that. But going through Mr. Cleary's report, it appears that we have no adverse impacts in many of the categories, so I think we can, I think we can move with a, with a sketch plan approval.
Mr. Hamer?
Are we discussing sketch plan approval? We're discussing...
Just anything to add to what has been said in the meeting today?
Oh, the only, the only two things that I'm concerned about, well, there are others, but one of them is the sewage disposal, the STP. I would like to ask our engineer, although who in the past has been the head of the Health Department and chairman of the board, as to what kind of background is there on the efficiency, the efficacy, and the operation of an STP plan? We have one, for instance, across the street from the present location, which is operating. It's operating in a community of 70 households. Not four households, not 18 households, not 25 households, 70-plus. How's it working? What's the mystery? Can we ask? I don't know anything about it. I was just wondering. How good is it? I don't think that that question has been answered yet, and I think it deserves an answer, or I wouldn't bring it up. The other thing that I think is interesting about this application is the fact that it's apparently sitting relatively close to a source of our drinking water. It's, it's interestingly enough, it has nothing to do with that question, except it's only a few hundred yards west of our water tower. Not that, so... More important, it sits on a water fire or an aquifer. I don't know whether we've discussed that, because I would hate to not discuss it and then have a question come up concerning the contamination of our water. I'm not talking... And those are the two questions I have. I'm not sure, Mr. Cleary, whether you've answered them or not yet.
They haven't been answered yet, Lauren, so there's more information that needs to be provided to provide those answers, and other agencies hold the key to many of those answers yet.
Thank you. Well, my opinion is that there are still quite a few questions that remain to be answered.
Good evening. My name is Michael Marinus. I'm site engineer for the project Barapanachi and Van Wiel, 175A Commerce Drive. Couple additional questions have come up or have been reiterated, and I know that I've testified to some of those items already, but in an effort to try to clarify some of the issues, I just felt compelled to make an additional statement. With regard to the chromaglast system that we're proposing, that's technology that's been in existence for approximately 20 years. It's not new technology. It's not a full treatment plant. It's different. It's a packaged plant, and it's something that the Health Department permits for flow of less than 15,000 gallons per day. There would need to be a homeowners' association or some kind of association created to monitor the effluent from the plant, and they would be required to, to provide annual reports to the Health Department that indicate what the effluent loads are. That's all part of the standards by the Health Department. In addition, I had met with Walter Hilbert of the Health Department, and I believe I testified to this last time, and we submitted a drawing which indicates the capture zone for the wells, which are located to the north of the property. They're not located at the, immediately east where the tower is. They're located further north, but we submitted a drawing that indicates the limits of the capture zone. I had met with the Health Department, and they told us if we could keep the leaching field, two pools, by the way, out of that capture zone, which he provided to us, then he would not have an issue with our proposal. And the reason why the southern corner was originally suggested is because the northern portion of the site is within the capture zone, and the southern half of the site is outside of the capture zone. And I know that we submitted a drawing that indicated the limits, and the pools that are shown on the plan are outside of that capture zone. Also, just intuitively, what we're trying to convey, because I know there was a question from a member of the public that they would like an answer more that they could understand, to put it in the simplest terms, if you had 16 leaching pools, some of which would be located in the capture zone without this treatment facility, you've got five or six leaching untreated effluent into the capture zone as an as-of-right measure. So what we're trying to do is to pull all of the leaching pools out of the capture zone. That's the intention of the project. So intuitively speaking, you can, I think it's clear that that is a less environmentally impact method. In addition, we're treating the, the effluent as opposed to a standard septic tank system, which is essentially untreated effluent. With regard to the question about park space that came up, all of the space that we defined on the plan, and I believe there's about 37,000 square feet in total, are outside of any of the sanitary buffers that are shown on the plan. And all the buffers that we indicate on the plan meet DP, Health Department standards. So all the required setbacks are proposed in the sketch plan. There are no variances required for the treatment facility. In addition, the buildings that we show on the plan, again, are schematic. We just put rectangles on the plans, and when we move forward, we will have more defined building envelopes, but the intention is to meet code. There are no variances currently proposed on the chart that we prepared with regard to building areas and heights, floor areas, et cetera. As a matter of fact, I think we have, we can increase those areas significantly as what we show on the plan and still meet village code. So I don't see any issues with regard to that. With regard to drainage, as Mr. Cleary noted, we, we have to go through the full SWIP process, and at some point, we will have to analyze the 100-year storm on this property, and we will have to make sure that we are detaining and not leaching, excuse me, that's not the proper term, that make sure that there is not more runoff under proposed conditions, under the 100-year storm scenarios, under existing conditions. So we tried to put in a theoretical maximum, if you will, of dry wells to demonstrate that we can get eight inches of storage on the site if it's necessary. Do I anticipate that we'll need that many? No, but we haven't gone that far in the design. Again, we're still at sketch plan. I think that was all that I wanted to address.
Just one question for me. You've spoken in your remarks about 16 houses, but in spite of the fact the Village of Southampton is half acre, the Board of Health requires the approval of 40,000.
40,000, correct. And I think we submitted a...
Which would not be 16 houses.
No, but it would still be, there would still be more leach, even under the 10-lot alternative, there would still be several lots within that northern half of the site with leaching pools in the capture zone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, my own thoughts are that this is not a small project. It's probably the last, one of the largest plots of undeveloped properties still remaining in the village, and there are quite a few questions which we've discovered and covered again this evening. Some issues which appear to have been addressed, I'm still concerned about. The traffic study, for instance, shows that a few more houses aren't going to add too much more traffic to the roads, but every single project that we are presented with, it's just a few more cars being added to the traffic. But when you put them all together, it's a lot of traffic. And there's something called segmentation in the environmental impact that deals with that issue, and it seems to me that we may have something of that issue here in terms of what's happening with the continued use of Moses Lane as a thoroughfare and the additional projects that are going up in that area. So that's a concern, of course. The sewage treatment plant, the leaching pools, all of those things are, we've discussed, you raised issues, the public has raised issues, but I don't know if any of those issues have been definitively resolved here this evening. I think there are still questions. The parkland issue is something that is in the village code, and you've attempted to make some accommodation for that, but again, not exactly clear how that's going to work. And then even this evening, some of the comments from the public that were brought up about the railroad right of way and what's happening near the railroad is, is new information that, that may need to be addressed. So I would say if you were to, I know you did not ask for it, but if you were to ask for the board's opinion on POSDEC or not, I think the board would be leaning towards POSDEC. But until those questions are better answered, we are not environmental experts sitting up here on the board. We're just people in the community trying to do the best job to sort our way through this. And as long as those questions remain, I would want to get a better answer and a more detailed study about that before we made that decision. So that said, I also would like to have my, my, my fellow board member, there's just three of us here this evening, so those two issues why I don't want to do a vote this evening.
Mr. Stevenson, if I may approach.
Can I just, just finish, and then you can come back up again?
Oh, I thought you were going to get long pause.
But the next question would be the closing of the public hearing, and I still think there's valid points being made by the public, like the railroad, again, you guys need, if, if that is something that the railroad needs to have addressed, it's something that came out of this public hearing this evening, and I, and I value that, and I think we should probably make, keep the public hearing open, another session, until we get some more answers, so... So that would be my sense.
I would make motion that we keep it open.
Keep it open. So that's where we're going to go. Would you like to add anything to what I...
May I?
Yes, please.
I just, in listening to your comments, it seems to me that if we are sitting here, are unable to determine what environmental impact this all would have, because we're not experts, as you said, in all of this, why wouldn't we ask for an environmental impact study and get the experts in?
Well, as I said, we're leaning that way.
Yes.
I've asked for additional input.
Okay.
The applicant has the option to change the plan, make additional recommendations. There's a lot of things they can do. They can go ahead with the way it is, and we can vote on it. I mean, that's their choice.
So you wouldn't, at this point, ask for an environment, if it stays the way it is, given all of the concerns?
I can't speak for the fellow board members, and there's another board member absent. I'm just saying...
Okay, so that would be my comment, then. I would strongly lean towards an environmental impact study and, and ask for an environmental...
I understand that that's what the...
Yes, thank you.
People here tonight would like us to do.
Well, your comments beg the question.
Actually, if I may, I would actually ask that the decision is made this evening. I, I think that all the information that we, we've got, if you can decide this evening and say, well, I think we really need to go for an environmental study and give it a positive deck, I think... deck, I think this evening would be a great time to do it, and that would move us on in the pos, in a really positive direction, if I might say. But also, in regard to the park space, I'd like to know if the, who actually gave the dimensions of how much area goes in that park space?
There is no definitive formula.
I think there is. There is a formula.
But it says with regards to 20 acres, it specifies, I think...
Oh, and the bill, does it in the building department? And what about the value of the property? If it's not going to be beneficial for the community...
Yeah, the property is used to calculate the park fee in the event that the park is not provided, but the actual dimensions of the park are only stated for a larger property, and it does not make clear if it has to be prorated exactly as the property is smaller.
Well, if it...
I think it's left to the board's discretion.
Right, but if it doesn't have any public benefit where it is, why would you leave it there? Why wouldn't you just do the cost of how much monies can go to the village?
Because there's no park area left to buy.
Oh, not to buy it, but you can, you can make a determination for someone, for something else in the area.
Not really.
No? But I thought there was a formula, no matter what the size.
There is a formula.
Okay.
It's imprecise, but the problem with accepting money is that there's no place really open space left.
So was this...
Excuse me, excuse me.
Okay, sorry.
There's no place left in the village that really provides a good return on that money.
Right, so this was actually, this park space was actually done on a, on a formula basis?
I don't know how it was derived.
Okay. The other thing is, is cannot be used as park space because part of those leaching pools, the water is going under the park space, so that's, it doesn't really...
It's something that, again, needs to be looked at.
Yeah, exactly. And also, going back to the sewage treatment plant, the cost, who's going to be responsible? Is it going to fall on the village, all of us, if it's not kept up by the community? That's another question.
The applicant has stated that a homeowners association will be formed assessing those individuals.
Okay, and there should be a bond and everything on that, and then...
That's not necessarily the case.
Oh, no? Okay, and the third thing, in regard to houses, I think if you were to put seven or eight houses along Moses Lane with driveways, you already have basically almost five driveways on Moses Lane, you'd be totally out of the capture zone for those seven houses. It would take some type of configuration to do that, but that's another thought, and then EIS could determine that, too. Maybe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask the board to consider, again, the 12th provision that was cited by Mr. Cleary, which is an environmental impact, which is the cumulative effect of two approvals, one of which is the ponds, the other of which would be this. To answer Mr. Hammer, what you're dealing with are two waste treatment plants with less than a mile in between them. Now, the letter that I sent you began by saying that while we understood the developer had a right to develop, and we understand that you have to look at these applications on a case-by-case basis, yet if there's any kind of a planning function going on here, you have to look at all of them. That's what provision 12 is asking you to address, that you have to look at the several, the several waste treatment plants and how much effluvia you're introducing to a one-mile, to a one-mile area. The second thing I'd like to say is that the questions that you are trying to address here, it's not your responsibility to answer them. It's only your responsibility to say, yes, the questions exist about environmental impacts, and it's the function of the environmental impact statement to answer those questions, not the planning board and not the public. We only have to raise the issues. You know, it's not, it is not the function of the planning board to answer and define with any greater specificity the environmental impacts. That is why you ask for an environmental impact statement.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, given the fact that...
Can you go up to the mic, please?
Given the fact that there were one or two issues raised which we think might warrant some additional comment, and given the fact that you have only three board members this evening, I certainly would request that the application be held, held open and continued.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I have a resolution to that for a second?
I think, I think that between three of you possibly could decide whether you need that EIS statement this evening. So I'm going in that respect. So I really can't say anything else. I mean, there are a lot of environmental issues here, and, and they will affect the village very much, especially in the water quality. The plant will take care of the nitrates, but it will not take care of the phosphates. Nitrates affect saltwater. Phosphates affect still water, water that's fresh water. So there is no remediation for the phosphates that will come out of this development of 16 houses. And also, when you look at the type of the water that'll come out, the actually storm water issue, that is one of the biggest issues today, storm water abatement, how you take care of it. And we all know that even one of the storms that was mid-island was, was eight inches this past summer. So maybe you need, you need, if they're dry wells, you need something more than eight. So there are a lot of environmental issues. Thank you again.
Thank you. I would like to give the applicant a chance to revise or change their application before a positive declaration is determined, which is why I'm reluctant to vote this evening. I would rather hold the matter open, hold the public hearing open until my fellow board member, Mrs. Gilmore, returns, and if the board agrees with me, could I have a resolution to that effect?
I'll make a motion to approve the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes the Beach Plum Meadows LLC.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for your participation.
Thank you.
Attaboy, all of them. Although, you've got to tell me about this source.
Get three places, because all my files are on the floor.
Mr. Jellobis, I love her. I love her. She's... I love her. Smooth that down, if anyone.
Good job. I mean, you can really, you can really slow it on. This doesn't work.
So now we have the equally contentious issue of 500 Old Town Row. I hope not. This tennis court, all right.
Good evening. I was informed today that we were coming before you about three hours ago.
Do we have your name, sir, for the record?
I'm sorry, Jason Green. I'm the owner of 500 Old Town. Long story short is, I went to Squire's office today to discuss the drainage issue that we had discussed at the last meeting, and there was an issue with respect to the water table height in relation to the bottom of the dry wells for the drainage. So long story short is, we revised the plan to reflect the concerns of the board, and this is where it goes. At this same time, who should I present this to?
You just have one copy?
Yeah, of course. I just have one copy. Well, I have two copies, actually.
You're doing that to stamp in, and then...
Sure.
Sir, you better, you could stamp one in tonight, but you need to get a full set of copies to the board.
Understood, understood. I wanted to at least bring this to the board this evening. I didn't know I was coming here tonight.
Please, please, no, stay here.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. Is it up here?
I don't see it.
Is it making these happen?
That's it.
He's going to put this in the record now, it needs to be stamped in. You can just handwrite it in if you want.
So basically, what we came up with was a galley drainage system where the dry wells, the bottom of the tennis court is at elevation eight, and the groundwater is at elevation four. So I believe that you had mentioned, Mr. Lemansky, that you wanted a two-foot separation from the water table.
I think that's what's required right now.
Okay, so two foot. So basically, we came up with two-foot drainage structures. The amount of, amount of dry wells is 14 of them with the proper separation, actually, I should probably give this to you as well to stamp in, which is the, how they're installed. There needs to be two-foot separation between each dry well, and then they need to be four feet in distance from rows, from the front row to the back row. And this system would accommodate the drainage and at the same time, address the water table issue. And that's it.
What is copy?
I'll get your copies, and I apologize for the late submission.
I had a question. There was in the submission, the, this plan as well?
Mm-hmm.
That shows a different landscaping plan that is on this plan. Is this just to show the detail of the drainage? Is that why this was submitted?
This was, this was submitted to show the, the landscaping around the tennis court, which is required on behalf of the board.
So this is the landscape plan, and it's different?
This is, this is the landscape plan that was approved by the village, but this was specific to the tennis court. This was just a drawn-in border. It has nothing to do with anything other than that was just artistic.
This is what's being proposed?
That is correct. Around the tennis court, correct.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because this has that separation here and a different element, which might be okay, too, but...
Understood. That was, I believe, five-foot Western red cedars, or, and then they needed to be two, two rows of them.
You've got this and that. You should really combine it into one.
Yeah, it would be better if it all was viewed on one plan. Maybe this needs to just not be part of the record.
It needs to just not be part of it. This is an Edmund Hollander design, which...
Okay. So this is, we're going to take this out of the equation?
That's fine. You don't need to even...
No, but the question is that you're showing this landscaping on this print, and the drainage of this print is not the one that you're proposing, so you should really combine that landscape with the drainage that you're putting on the...
Right, you're not going to want to show this leaching pool detail on this anymore. You may as well show this one.
That detail is incorrect.
Maybe that this is the plan that should show the actual drainage, because this one isn't correct anymore. This is that really deep leaching pool detail?
Right, understood, which are the four dry wells.
Yeah, so either I guess revise this one as well, remove that, see what I mean?
Yeah, this was done by our tennis court, to be honest, the tennis court contractor. So I will just have him put all the information on that plan.
One sheet.
One sheet, exactly. But this, you can strike from the record. This is not necessary.
That's good. Thanks.
So if you could, the sooner you can get those drawings, the sooner they can review it, and the sooner we can...
Sounds good. Not a problem.
Would you like to adjourn to the next meeting?
Sure. Yes, please.
Make a motion to approve the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes the 500 Old Town LLC.
And when is the next meeting?
Second.
It is January 5th. It's an early work session and...
It's combined.
Public hearing combined.
January 5th.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
We had a second.
All in favor? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
In the public hearing section, first item on that agenda is PEP 2 Holdings.
I believe there's a request for adjournment in the file. The applicant's attorney thought it was adjourned.
Not in what I've got here, but...
Yeah, not in my file either, so maybe they just assumed that it was, but it's not in the record. They are making some changes to the plan, and I did make them in the field today.
No further receipt of documents as of 11:24, but we didn't have any specific projection as to adjournment or anything else. We're still waiting for documents.
I mean, he was under the understanding that it was adjourned, so...
So if he's under the understanding, I would take that as the request of the applicant to adjourn to the next meeting, the PEP 2 Holdings.
So moved.
All in favor? Second.
Aye.
Aye. South Lane Properties, 104 Gin Lane.
This application was evaluated under secret as a type one action.
It was adjourned. We just adjourned that.
And the applicant submitted a full EAF, Part 1, and we did a coordinated review with other agencies. We did not hear back from the other agencies, so the board can act as lead agency and go ahead and adopt a neg deck. We've done a Part 2 EAF, which is going through and evaluating all of the impacts, and then from there, moving whether there are moderate to large impacts that would occur, and that would kind of lead to additional analysis in a Part 3, and there were no such impacts. So this is, we've done a graph neg deck, but I think it should be in your packet, or if not...
I didn't see it.
Okay. That has just gone up, but this has the, looks like this.
Yeah, we've got that. That is this, I believe.
Yeah, I didn't have the number of it because, yeah, we did it today because, you know, we're past the 30 days, so we wanted to try to get it done this week.
So in view of the fact there are no significant environmental impacts in this impact forms you've done, Kathy, it's your recommendation that we adopt a neg deck to this?
That's correct.
May I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
All in favor?
Second. Second to move?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I could, I think now that you've gone that far, I think we were still at the sketch plan stage with this, and perhaps we could close the public hearing on that, which I would also ask you to do, if possible.
Well, let me ask the public if there's anybody here who wants to talk about it, and if there isn't, I have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for South Lane Properties, 104 Gin Lane.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Southampton Real Estate Partners, 85 and 95 Down East Lane.
Gilbert G. Flanagan for the applicant. This was discussed at your work session. You may remember this is a two-lot subdivision at the end of Down East Lane, brought about by virtue of the fact that these two lots, which had previously existed separately, had merged, and so now we're attempting to reestablish them, although in a better situation because the former configuration had one lot that was non-conforming, we now have two conforming lots. And one of the things that we submitted at the work session was a sketch, actually, a reduced size of a subdivision that showed building envelopes for both lots. The purpose of that was to demonstrate that we could establish a conforming house without wetlands relief on both lots. Now, that was a reduced-size map, and since then, I've submitted a full-sized drawing prepared by the Reiner Group, which demonstrates that, so that it is possible to create two lots which would each accommodate a single-family dwelling, septic system, and so forth, in compliance with all the zoning regulations and also meeting the wetland setbacks. Now, one of the things that you did mention, and we did discuss briefly at the, at the work session, had to do with the question of nitrogen loading, and we had the landscape architects take a look at that question. And as a result of the overall proposed development of this property, these two properties, I should say, bearing in mind, we have not finalized the improvements, because you really can't do that until you get the subdivision, we've made certain assumptions and certain conclusions about the amount of lawn that is presently existing and the amount of lawn that will wind up after we provide extensive wetland buffers and meadows. And I have a letter from Michael Boucher, the landscape architect, indicating that currently the existing lawn has about 232,000 square feet of area to it. It's proposed, when all is said and done, that there will only be about 6,200 square feet of lawn. when all is said and done, that there will only be about 6,200 square feet of lawn. A lot of what the lawn was, other than what'll be improved, will be converted to a wetlands buffer and meadows. And according to Mr. Boucher's conclusions, that reduction in lawn alone will result in a 49% overall reduction in nitrogen loading over and above what exists now. So I think that's a substantial, I think that's a substantial reduction. I have multiple copies of that letter, which I'll hand up. So I think that's all I have to say at this point. I don't know that there were any other substantive issues, but if you have any, I'll be happy to try to discuss them.
Gilbert, is there any reason why this couldn't go forward for consideration upon the premise that there will not be any variances requested, if the board does grant it?
I'm not sure that you want to do that, because, plus, the main issue, I think, would have to do with wetland setbacks. Now, as you probably know, that, that is not a variance. That's a wetland special permit. I don't think I'd want to foreclose the ability to do that, because the Board of Appeals, obviously, we need the Board of Appeals, would have the ability to judge that application when and if it comes. So I think-
Well, what I'm saying is, can they, can they, if the applicant is representing that each lot can be developed with a compliant, single-family residence without intrusion of the wetlands or variances, and that's a representation as to why the board should approve it?
I think what you, what you wanted to know is, I understood it was whether or not you're creating, the slot would automatically necessitate an application, and that's not the case.
No, I'm saying if and when the lots are developed, or residences changes and all that, that the development be such that it complies with all zoning regulations and the wetlands, as they now stand.
I don't know that we'd want to do that. Let me give you an example of another case where you approved a subdivision where that was not required. If you remember, may remember the Lee Burgland subdivision on South Main Street. I don't know if you remember that one. But it involved creation of two lots, and there was actually a finger of wetlands on the property immediately to the north of the property, and when one took the wetland setbacks of that into consideration, the vacant lot we created had no building envelope. And what this board did, and what the Board of Appeals did, approved it, but any application for wetlands permits would have to go to the Board of Appeals.
Did I get it wrong? Did you just not represent that-
One can, yes, one can construct a-
Well, what I'm worried about is that this representation doesn't impact the decision of the board, that somebody represents that a compliant house can be made, can be built, which might have a footprint of 2,500 feet, but the subdivision is approved, and then an applicant comes in and buys it and says, "Well, I want a 4,500-square-foot footprint house."
And if he does that, then he has to go to the Board of Appeals if he wants that.
Well, we understand that, but the planning board may have the opportunity to preclude that if it grants a subdivision, on the representation that a conforming house can be built.
I would have to take that back to my client, but I think that would be an unfair condition, given the circumstances.
Well, then maybe it shouldn't be represented to the board that a compliant house could or would be built.
That's something I'd have to take back to my client, but I think that's, that's an unreasonable condition. Again, it's not a variance when we're talking about wetlands-
I'm not talking about wetlands. I'm talking about an area variance or a dimensional variance.
Oh, a setback variance. I think that's, I don't think that would be a problem.
Any variance other than wetland from the-
Oh, okay. Well, I misunderstood you. That would probably, I'll discuss, that would probably be okay.
All right.
I'll certainly take that back to him, but I want, obviously, a wetland special permit is something that would have to be reviewed by the Board of Appeals.
Well, but aren't you saying-
That's not a zoning setback. I agree with you. That's not a zoning. I'll be happy to discuss that.
Please, thank you.
Sure.
Just one more question also about the existing house that is proposed to be how many feet away from the lot line? It's very close. They are gonna tear that house down, is that the plan?
Well, that house would have to be torn down if the division's approved, because bearing in mind, what we're now doing is moving the division line closer to it to make the other lot conforming, whereas before, that other lot that's vacant was, was further away, and it was non-conforming. So yes, that, that, I think-
That is a condition as well.
I think on the drawings we submitted, that the house is labeled as to be removed. So you're correct. That's it, unless you have any other questions? Is there any other information you want before the next meeting, other than a response to Mr. Robinson's question, which I will have for you before the work session?
Is this letter meant to be in response to all of the comments that we had regarding nitrogen loading and so forth?
Yeah, that's, that was, yeah, that's what that is, right.
We'll look, take a look at that.
Okay, if you need something else, let me know.
Anyone here from the public to comment on this application? So, Mr. Flanagan, you'd like us to adjourn this to the next meeting?
Please, open for all purposes. Make a motion to approve the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes to Southampton Partners, 8595 Down East Lane.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 9 Main Street.
Second story? I saw Tim McCully today. He said he sent in a letter requesting adjournment. He asked me if it hadn't gotten into the record, would you please, what I did was just say-
Okay. Not in the record.
I don't have any representation. I'm just having to run under-
Just a little bird.
Well, since there's nobody here, I'll make a motion to approve the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes to 9 Main Street LLC.
All in favor?
Aye.
So in the case of the application of Starbucks Coffee Company, Mr. Lemansky must recuse himself, which means we do not have a quorum, but if you would like to-
Sure. I could, I understand you can't take any action, right, but John Bennett for the applicant. One of the, at the last meeting, when we were here, we had a, I think we had everything-
John, if you could do the microphone.
I'm sorry, I think, I'm sorry, Warren. I think Bob Smith had been able to contact Kathy and put everything on the site plan that was required, but then, actually, a partner was here and wanted something else on the site plan. So first, I balked, said I wish he'd asked for that four months ago, blah, 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 blah. But in any event, then I went and asked back to Bobby Smith, and it actually did make a lot of sense to me, because you've got a, you've got a parking calculation, but you don't, you don't show where, where it comes from. So I'll submit these to the billing department tomorrow, but what we did do is we had Bob take the, I had Bob put the 31 spaces, and they all come from the, that's, they come from the site plan that was approved and is the subject of the shared parking agreement. So I'll submit these to the billing department tomorrow. So they're all there. Now, we, no more, we took the additional drainage ring off, because as we demonstrated to you, the planning board's approval back in 85 had certain drainage requirements. We went and we had NORSIC excavate those and explore them, and they're actually have about 600, somewhere between 500 and 600 cubic feet more of capacity, of storage than the original plan. So that's, our position is that no additional drainage is required, because we have drainage that conforms to the prior existing approved site plan. We're not adding one square foot. The drainage that was installed, not only does it, not only does it apply, to comply, but it exceeds what was required by about 500 cubic feet, and it creates an unnecessary problem with the upgraded septic system. So we're at a point where we'd love to have an approval. We can't, and would respectfully ask, obviously, unless there's anybody else here to say something, that the board put it on for action on the January 5th.
You're referring to the drainage in northern part?
Drainage, Aldo. No, Aldo, what we did was we took all this drainage, as per the request, it was specifically asked to unearth these drainage structures, and there's a letter from Bob Smith that's been in the file now for some time, where Bob says, "Not only are these structures all there," okay, "not only are they all there, but they exceed the-"
I understand.
"-structure requirement."
There is nothing on the plan that you submitted that shows this one.
Yeah, this one, there's only two pools shown here.
Yeah, that's because it's under, underneath, underneath the ground, and it's taken care of and watered by-
Okay, that's why I was looking for the reference.
What is in there? We actually discussed it the last meeting. Kathy, you and I actually discussed it the last year, and you acknowledged that you received it from Bob.
I just don't remember.
Yeah, no, Bob says, NORSIC went out, they were all pulled up, there are two of there, there are all three of them are there, one of them is buried under the blacktop, but they're all there.
Well, you should have a cover to grade on it anyway.
Excuse me?
You should bring a cover up to grade on it.
Yeah, if you want, I guess if you want to make that-
One under the driveway.
Yeah, see, there we go. So I'll drop these off in the billing department tomorrow.
You don't want to adjourn, it's just automatically adjourned, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, that's what it is. I would just sub it to anything else. I think I've given everything we need, and if you could have it on for approval next time. Or action, I should say.
That's not, unfortunately, that's not the question.
It's not the question.
It's not. The question is whether it meets the parking requirements, and it does.
Oh, so, well, first, we have to meet a parking requirement in the village.
Right, that's not, yeah.
Does that include the number of people who go to Starbucks normally at 9 o'clock, 11 o'clock, and 3 o'clock in the afternoon?
There's no separate parking requirement for Starbucks.
We've all been there, haven't we?
Yes.
Are there parking places to accommodate those?
I-
Is it our business, or is that the business of the owner only?
It's the business of the legislature of the village, Warren.
It's in the legislation in the village.
The trustees want to change it, they can, but they have not yet. As a matter of fact, if anything, Warren, a few years ago, they, they lessened the parking requirement, saying that in the village business, you take the required parking per square footage of a use, and you multiply it times 60%. And you don't have to trust me, just read the, read the code. I was, I was surprised to see that, and again, and I was a little bit embarrassed, because it was pointed out to me by the project architect, so.
All I can say is there are two great retail stores in America. One is Apple, which has the highest sales per square foot of any store, anywhere in America. That's one of them. The other one, not necessarily sales per square foot, but activities, is Starbucks. So all I can say is, if you've got a small parking lot, lots of luck.
But, you know, it's interesting, this-
That's not my business.
No, but it's, I'm glad, I'm glad you bring it up, because it's interesting. It has a lot more parking than a lot of uses existing, similar uses, on Main Street, Jobbs Lane, and Hampton Road.
Not generalizing. Why don't you just ask about the Starbucks that are sprinkled up and down the south fork?
No, but my point is that there are an awful lot of uses on Jobbs Lane, Main Street, Hampton Road, et cetera, et cetera, that have no parking, zero parking, and somehow we're able to survive. This actually provides a number of off-streets parking, parking spaces.
I'm not arguing with you. We'll, we'll find out, maybe.
So, John, is it, the applicant gonna then bring the covers up to grade?
As requested by the village engineer?
The only concern, if we can do it, it's actually not, let me take a look at this. I don't know that it's on my property. It's in the shared easement. That's the problem. Who's got, call that the property owner? Yeah, I don't, I don't think you can tell me to do something that's in the other property owners. Let me see. It's, there are-
It's in that roadway.
Is it in that roadway?
Yep.
Oh, we'll bring it up to grade then, yeah. You know, it's on Bob's plan. I'm sorry, Kathy. It's on the prior, it's on the-
Oh.
If they're, if they're in our property or within our easement, well, we'll just, you want that third cover that's, sure, yeah, we can do that.
If you have to maintain it, you have to do something with it.
Oh, yeah. Well, let's see. Isn't that 10-foot easement? It's hard to say. Well, the only, if it's within, within our property or within our easement-
Well, it should be sitting right in here somewhere.
Yeah, well, the only concern that I have is, I will, we will do it if we, if I, if I, I can't trespass to do it. Well, I need something to write a decision on, so- So if I, if I have, it's within my property line, if it's in my property line- Well, can that be determined quickly enough? Oh, God, I'm trying to- Not here tonight, but- Yeah. You see, here's, here's the big problem that I have here. The-
How did he verify this thing in his letter, if he didn't see it?
Well, you know, NORSIC goes in, and they have cameras, and they put cameras in the, the septic and the drainage systems. I've actually seen, seen them do that, and that doesn't- Well, they must have excavated the, the top to get to it. No, there were two of them, two of them are, two of them are present, two of them are open, and they're connected. So they're guessing where the third one is? No, they saw that it actually exists. Yeah, but I mean, we don't know how, what distance it is from where, anything. They just went in there with a camera, determined that it exists and all that. They went in there with a camera. Even if there is an opening in the cover that's there now anyway, right? Yeah, they don't even know, they, they wouldn't know that. So you might have to excavate the whole top of the tank. Might have to excavate the whole top of the tank. And my concern is, if for some reason, it's not on my prop, it's not, it's clearly not on my property, but it's within the easement. If it's within the easement, I'll do it. I mean, so for a decision, you could say, if it's in the easement, I'll, I'll do it. My concern is, I can't be subject to, I can't, I can't be subject to having to go on somebody else's property to do it. All right. But certainly, if it's within the easement, I'll, I'll raise that- If you get Bob then to determine it. It's gonna have to be the whole tank, probably. Is it, if this is gonna present an issue for, the possibility for non-approvement- Well, I think the board can conditionally do it, but, you know, we'd like to know whether or not it's gonna be done, so that's gonna- If I, I understand, and I understand why, you know, if I'm saying that I've got adequate drainage, then, then, then that's, I understand that, why you want, why you want that condition. You don't want a hypothetical contingency, in other words. Absolutely. No, 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 I understand. I, it has been verified by Squires and Holden and NORSIC, which is presumably, I mean, I think you'll trust those people- But it's there. We just don't know where it is, or how much excavation is gonna be required. Well, no excavation would be required. I think we just have to, we just have to cut, cut around the blacktop. Yeah, well, that's excavation. Yeah, if you want, it just, just, that, that's fine. I, I think I'm within the, this is parking, this is, there's an agreement for parking, and, and we should be able to take care of that. That's fine.
The next question is, does everybody agree?
It just needs to locate it then on the survey. What'd you say, Warren? I'm sorry, what did Warren say? I didn't want to miss something. We'll, we'll locate it on the survey. Okay. So I'll drop these off. There's nothing you can do tonight. We'll get that done.
Jen?
Okay. Do you want, you want, Kathy, why don't you take that one now?
The narrow one?
Do you, oh, do you have one already?
Is this the one that you're gonna drop off tomorrow?
Yeah.
No, I don't.
So take that. Okay, perfect.
The subdivision review. Mitchell Family Real Estate requests extension. I think we've done that, haven't we?
You did that at the work session.
I did that at the work session. Paul Robinson is awaiting, we've written in the file is a decision approving the final map conditionally. A affirmative vote on the motion will be to conditionally approve the subdivision. The conditions are that a covenant be filed.
I don't have it. Okay.
It should be right in front of you, Steve.
It wasn't in the packs.
I gave separate copies to you.
Wait, this is the flagpole?
Do you have an extra?
Not in front of me.
I've got multiple copies of this, this flagpole, but I don't have any.
It's in the file. Conditions are that covenant be filed. That as long as the property remains unified in use and ownership, press and house doesn't have to be removed, fulfillment of all the conditions of the Health Department, Board of Review, and the submission of an official map, or complying with all the village technical requirements of the final map.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the conditional resolution approving the minor subdivision in the matter of Paul and Joan Robinson.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
In the application of OIA associates, the applicant has requested adjournment of January 5th.
I think we did that at the work session also.
Also, 550 and 554 Hill Street.
Mm-hmm. Adjourned.
And Harconin and Artrieves, we could not find that at the workstation, work session.
That was in sketch plan approval, and we're waiting for a new subdivision application, so that's at the- so that's at the pleasure of the applicant, whenever they want to go ahead and submit, so. I mean, I think, Beau, you asked that it could remain on the agenda?
Yeah.
So we'll make a motion to approve the...
Oh, I don't think you have to do anything.
Okay, just adjourn, if they're not here, okay.
Yeah.
Second. In site plan review, the Suffolk County National Bank, we determined at the work session that we would draft a resolution. I know you were tied up in court, Beau?
Yeah, so I did not get that done, but I think there was also one other further document that the applicant was going to submit. Linda's left, I thought there was, she said that there would be revised, something submitted the next day. I don't know whether that was done or not, but I'll, I'll tend to it as we get through it.
They submitted the sort of reverse cap, backing into the square footage calculation.
Yeah, maybe that was it, but I thought there was something that was going to be further submitted, but it's all right. I will, I should have that available for the January 5th meeting.
Okay.
So just adjourn it for all purposes, simple thing.
Make a motion to approve the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes the Suffolk County National Bank.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nothing further on the Habad.
Pelosi Iota Roller has been adjourned.
I think we adjourned that one too.
Most suspiciously done, Crete Properties adjourned. J Jet Holdings, 199 Mariner Drive.
Tom moving for J Jet.
All right, Jet, aren't we?
Yeah, J Jet.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. Tom Lawrence for J Jet Holdings LLC. We have taken some photographs that hopefully helped to support our response submitted at the November 24th work session. If I may submit those.
Do you have them dated, attributed, and identified as to what they are, or is it readily apparent what they are?
It's readily apparent, but if the board chooses, I can certainly...
Is this in the parking areas?
It's the parking area, it's Mariner Drive and the surrounding locations. It just kind of walks you through the neighborhood, so to speak.
It's okay.
There's another one there.
Okay. Yeah, one more. Just give it to Bob. Tom, thanks. I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Who wants?
Okay, you, you have, you need one, right? You've got two. Oh, there was two, I didn't, I didn't see that.
I've got all of them.
And beyond that, we're here tonight to hear any concerns and/or address any questions that the board may have.
Well, Kathy, you were in here at the work session where the applicant requested some relief from your suggestion that they bring the pavement back from the, bring it back from the ad. Do you understand what they...
I do. Kathy and I sat down this afternoon and went through it, and, you know, you always want to try to make sure that you're not going to have runoff onto an adjacent property, but in this case, I see that you're, you're trying to neaten it up and have the fence right on the property line, and it does seem reasonable, so.
Thank you.
That seems good. And also, the other thing about the parking spaces in the middle...
Oh, with the end, the end caps and...
We talked about that, and the end caps, and that, you know, that that, this isn't like a retail location.
Right.
And you do have a lot of trucks going in and out, and you might not be using those spaces, so that, that seems a valid concern as well, so.
So the caps are there or not?
No, and, and I had kind of asked for them as a kind of formalizing that the 20, 21, 22, and 23, those parking spaces were in the middle of the villa.
Right.
But those are probably going to be used the least, is my guess. Well, maybe not, because they're closer to the building.
Depends on the weather.
It depends, yeah. And then you guys submitted an EAF, so we would, we would need to review that at this point, and I see you, you're dealing with the downspouts and so forth.
Yes.
So, I mean, I'd have to go through it more thoroughly about the outdoor storage and conformance of the code, but it looks like you've dealt with most of the issues at least, you know, just from, from stance.
Well, we hope so, but certainly happy to...
So I mean, I would think it's ready for public hearing, is what I was going to say, is that we don't have to wait. If we were to schedule it for public hearing for January 5th, and then get that notice, and that way, we can move forward.
And is it possible to hear any additional concerns such that, that you may have after a detailed review?
Mm-hmm.
So that hopefully we could be, be prepared for the, and not consume any more of the board's time than needed?
Right.
Great.
So, okay, so make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the J Jet Holding, 199 Mariner Drive?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll see you in Jan, next year.
Thank you all very much. We do have this.
We have the written decision in the file for Mr. Da Peng Zou.
In the file is the written decision approving the site plan for the flag lot, and affirmative vote on the motion will be to approve the amended landscape plan.
So moved.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I should note to the board too, that you had verbally approved the application of 46 Moses LLC at a previous meeting, subject to council drafting a decision, and in drafting that, a decision this afternoon, I became aware of the fact that there may be an issue with regard to the status of the applicant property as a flag lot. And I requested the attorney for the present owner to provide a copy of the deed, and upon review of the deed, I can make a official determination as to whether or not it constitutes a flag lot. If it doesn't, then it might have been, might not have been appropriate that it was submitted to the board.
Okay. And what was that application, Bob?
It was 46. It's not on the agenda anymore, Roy, because the board had approved it.
Pending review.
Because the, to expedite the matter for the applicant, but it appears that it may not have been...
Is this from Treadway?
No, this is a 46 McGee Street. It was two months ago.
Steve Treadway and...
No, that was over on, this is that Zoo, this is, this is another one, Warren. So anyway, I just provide that for your information.
Okay.
Pulaski Street's adjourned, Skyfall Barnhart.
What, oh, Pulaski Street was adjourned, okay.
It says new landscaping plan to be reviewed.
We have to go out and inspect that. I don't know if there's anybody here. I don't think so. So we will do that in the next month.
All right.
And, for my comments.
We'll hear back from you then.
So make a motion to approve the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes to Skyfall Barnhart, 68 Barnhart Street?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Lucy Bushman, 473 Hill Street.
Do you have anything?
Same reply on this. Yes, we have a application, those submitted, November 24th.
Do you have anything?
No.
I don't have anything in my packet either. So you have to review that?
Yeah, I haven't even prepared a, an area for this one.
Make a motion to approve the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes Lucy Bushman, 473 Hill Street?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Has anybody read the minutes?
I think the section is actually 437 Hill Street.
It's not 473?
I have to make that exception. 437, yeah.
37.
I'll make a motion, unless you'd like to wait until we have four, but I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 6th, October 27th, and November 3rd. Approving minutes?
I'll second that, approving it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
4:30 the next meeting.
Yeah, because we have a combo, combo meeting.
I'd like the public to note that there will be no planning board work session on Monday, December 29th. The next meeting will be a combined work session and public meeting beginning at 4:30 PM on January 5th, 2015. Is there anything else? With that, no other business to discuss, could I have a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.